Okay, all right. I will go ahead and kick off the committee, the whole meeting on the September 20th, 2021. We, I think we have at least four council members present. We, we do know that Councilmember Ed Prince and Ruth Perez will not be able to make it this evening. But with that, I'm going to go ahead and get us started. We have a very important topic on the agenda tonight. It's the American Rescue Plan Act update and basically how we're going to use available funds to help our city through this difficult time. And with that, I understand that I can ask Carrie Roller to get us, get us rolling on this.
Great. Well, I'm gonna share my screen. So hopefully you can see my presentation.
Yes, we can.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. So, good evening to all of you. I'm here tonight to give an update on the American Rescue Plan Act, also known as ARPA. I'm going to take you through our proposed early action plan for the ARPA funds this evening. As we go through this, as a reminder, we are giving you a sense of what we could do with these funds. These funds, unlike the previous CARES funding, can be used over the next several years, so we have time to be thoughtful on what direction we go in using these funds, and we really welcome your feedback this evening. So, a federal stimulus bill was signed into law in 2021 to help combat the effects of COVID-19 pandemic, similar to the CARES funding that we received last year. An intent is just to provide immediate rescue efforts that lead to recovery. So, of this $1.9 trillion stimulus bill, 350,000 was allocated to states, municipalities, and counties, and another 130 billion to local governments. The City of Renton was allocated 18.1 million, and this is based on our population and a modified community block grant formula. We can use these funds for costs beginning in March 3rd, 2021, and all the way through to December 31st, 2024. So it's really important to keep in mind, this is really not a short-term decision, but really the need for a long-term plan on how to use these dollars. Fifty percent of these funds will be paid out in 2021 and the remainder next year. So, also considering cash flow on needed projects is really an essential key to planning as well. So the Department of Treasury has issued an interim ruling which outlines five spending categories, and so I've summarized them here. The first one is to support public health expenditure, so this is really just mitigation efforts against the pandemic. Another is to address negative economic impacts caused by the public health emergencies. So this could include economic support for employees, households, small businesses. The third is to replace lost public sector revenue, and the city can use this funding to provide governmental services, and this was a newly added allowable use from the last CARES funding that I'll explain a little bit more later on. And the fourth is to provide premium pay for essential workers, and lastly, the fifth is to invest in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure, just wanting to improve access in those areas. There are a few items that we cannot use these funds for, and they are to fund pension funds for legal settlements and for federal grant matching requirements. The Government Finance Officers Association has also given some really good guidance and best practices in keep in mind when making decisions on how these funds will be used. Remember, these funds are temporary in nature and they're not an ongoing revenue source, so they really encourage municipalities to look at funds for non-reoccurring or one-time projects or opportunities that could provide immediate relief and rescue right now. The guidance also encouraged collaboration between jurisdictions, local jurisdictions, and areas that just really made sense, especially in projects that we could expand or impact or relief to our community and open up further opportunities. And then lastly, they have really been hitting home a lot that we really need to take time to make some careful consideration on how we plan to use these funds. The landscape of the overall federal funding opportunities is really changing constantly, and there seems to be a lot of additional funding at the state and federal level to a lot of areas of support and need. And so keeping in mind all the dollars available when making decisions will be really an important step to stretch our allotted dollars as best we can. So as I mentioned previously, and a key difference in the second round of funding of the ARPA funds was to allocate cities, to allow cities opportunity to use some of these funds for revenue loss. And so, there's a formula that's been given to agencies to use in calculating our overall revenue loss. Our city did experience revenue loss, but again, because of the key quick decisions we made early on in the pandemic and the deep cuts we made in order to prepare for those expected losses, the overall impact to our general plan was not as severely spelt. Those decisions did include postponing upgrades to needed technology and infrastructure within the city that were still needed today. So the revenue loss calculation is essentially just to compare what did we actually receive in 2020 to what we could have expected to receive based on taking what we received in 2019 and just adding a growth formula to that. And so, the City of Renton, using this calculation, we experienced $17.1 million of revenue loss in 2020, which is a pretty significant figure. The city can go ahead and calculate that revenue loss each year through 2024. The other key difference with these ARPA funds compared to our last round of CARES funding is that all grants, especially federal grants, have many detailed and cumbersome reporting requirements. So in regards to revenue loss, the reporting just is not as cumbersome. The city would just need to show that we experienced a loss and that we could use it for governmental services. A benefit of allocating a large amount of the grant dollars toward revenue loss just really frees that general fund balance to perform other projects and programs proposed to council while still complying with the overall general theme of how ARPA funds should be used. The caution is that not all the programs the city suggests to use ARPA funds for could fall under general governmental services category, so those areas of focus, we will need to make sure we follow some of those strict guidelines that federal grants have as we procure and move through the requirements of federal grants. So, staffs see a benefit in this ARPA funds by being able to use some of these funds to fall under general governmental services, just to report to Treasury as revenue loss, so that we can help lessen the burden of some of the reporting and just saving some time overall. Although 18.1 million that the city is being allocated is a large amount, when we really sat down to start to devise a plan on how we wanted to spend these funds, we realized quite quickly how much need there really was and how little dollars were available to support these programs. We formed an internal ARPA team with directors and managers from each department to provide input and evaluate proposed opportunities. We had an initial framework built already and shared that with this internal team to help highlight other areas we may have missed. This internal team, from this internal team, we expect that there will be some various subcommittees that will be organized to work through the plan as we move through the next steps. And the thought is that departments most responsible for the allocation areas will meet, bring in other team members if needed, begin general outreach and community member engagement, and just really discuss in more details on how the funds will be deployed. As a snapshot of where we hope to begin with some of the funding, we have some proposed areas of focus. Again, this is just our first early action plan, and we welcome council's feedback in some of these areas. The first is that in keeping in mind with council's priority of helping both economic recovery and community response, we have a bit more than 25% allocated to both of these areas. Last time through the last round of CARES funding, we invested in these areas quite heavily, and we wanted to make sure we continue to support these areas. This would include businesses, business support focusing on disadvantaged and disproportionately impacted industries, and community response for residents that were most impacted by this pandemic. Secondly, the proposal considers allocating about 20% to focusing on health precautions or minimizing touchpoints and increasing social distancing to reduce the spread of the virus. This would include projects that could reduce exposure by minimizing traffic in City Hall, as well as to have increased accessibility to our services through investment in technology and other facility improvements. The additional, the proposed funding opportunities also include about 25% for city operations, where we can use some of the funds to replace lost revenues, so that we can fund some of those areas we have postponed or delayed due to the pandemic, when we were expecting some of these significant revenue decreases last year. And then lastly, we have almost 30% allocated as unallocated, and this really is because the path of this virus continues to be a concern that seems to be changing quite constantly. And so we felt that holding aside as some unallocated to ensure we continue to adapt and support new challenges as they present themselves. We hope there's not new challenges, but just in case. So just a little bit deeper dive into some of these proposed areas of focus. We're proposing to allocate about $2.5 million to economic recovery. We're asking council tonight to consider approving two key programs in the spending category. The first is the Washington Flex Fund. So this is where we can contribute 1 million to the Washington State Department of Commerce for a small business loan program. And if we commit these funds this evening, and we can let them know by October 1st, 2021, the state will provide a two-to-one match of our dollars to, and also ensure that the contribution stays within our own city limits to provide, provide support to our own Renton businesses. These loans are managed by local community-based lenders, and the program is really, really very helpful. It will be for just small businesses and not-for-profits. They'll allow them to borrow up to $150,000 and really use it flexibly for just general business expenses. It's offering a low interest rate, no fees, and the other great thing is that the first year is just interest-only payments. So hoping this will really create some relief for some of the businesses that are experiencing a lot from the pandemic. The second that we're asking for council to approve this evening is some money to go to some small business grants. 600,000 to support small retail businesses in the downtown core who were disproportionately impacted by COVID, primarily due to some of the construction delays we saw. We have many businesses hurting as the effects of this pandemic linger on, specifically retail businesses, who really rely on that foot traffic and customers to enter their establishments. Our downtown core businesses have really been impacted quite differently as their businesses have experienced further reductions of foot traffic due to the construction, the delays presented in our downtown streets. Some other areas, or some other ideas in this area of focus were to allocate 250,000 to support other business outreach events that we can hold, outdoor events that really would encourage people to come into our, our city and, and visit local businesses. And the other is to assist partnering agencies who are not eligible for ARPA funds that are also experiencing needs of assistance to combat the effects of the pandemic. So we're proposing about 600,000 to go to SCORE, which is the South Correctional Entity. For community response, we are also asking council to approve this evening the approval to allocate 1.5 million for housing homelessness prevention and human services. This could include utility and rent assistance, debt forgiveness for residents for some of our outstanding utility bills owed to the city, or food assistance. And our new equity housing and human services department will really spearhead these efforts and work with other community organizations to get funds to the community and provide rescuing relief from the pandemic. Another area of thought would be to allocate 1 million dollars in spending broadband and Wi-Fi at community centers and throughout our downtown. Our community centers and neighborhood centers can be a place to go for residents who may not have access to internet, to do work, do business, or attend school. And some of our neighborhood centers broadband and Wi-Fi, we found, was just not robust enough to provide the help to all that needed this access. So we are proposing to expand coverage in these, these local areas, so that we have, our community can use these centers to do the work that they need to do. For health precautions, we're proposing, proposing to allocate 3.5 million to help mitigate the spread of the virus. Currently, our City Hall has touchpoints within most of the floors of City Hall for those seeking general governmental services. And so we would like to consider redesigning our lobby area, so that we can provide one location within City Hall to access, access city services. Currently, we have moved staff to temporary desks in the lobby right now, so that we could open our doors in July to those needing to access city services. This plan would create a formal lobby hub that would help reduce exposure, minimize traffic throughout City Hall, as well as provide better access for those visiting City Hall by just having one location that they can access city services. We believe these improvements will really create a better customer service experience, providing more efficient access to those services that people are coming to City Hall to, to help get help for. We're also asking council to approve tonight to invest 500,000 to purchase some hardware and software for staff to further support remote work. These suggested investments in technology and facility improvements would just help to increase our accessibility to our services for our businesses and residents. For city operations, we're proposing to allocate about 4.5 for general governmental services. Again, this is a new area of focus that was not allowed through the last round of CARES funding, in which most of the funds were used outside of the City Hall. So, the legislature really wanted to make sure the next round of support deployed from the federal government also included support for local jurisdictions, which it didn't before. The thought was to allow jurisdictions to use some of this round to support, to go specifically for general governmental services, so that cities could continue to have resources available to provide the same level of service to our community that residents and the community expect to see. And so this wouldn't be just adding to our fund balance, these are dollars that they're looking for us to spend for general governmental services. Some examples could be to fund the grant manager position. This new position will help us maneuver the roles surrounding these funds, so that we can have a dedicated support staff person to help the city with compliance. There's pages and pages of compliance with this grant, so this person would really be able to help keep us on track with all the compliance in regards to the ARPA funds. Another idea that we had was to support software replacements and upgrades of some of our old or antiquated technology that really have made it hard to do some of the key deliverables during our work, uh, remote working environment. And we've also seen a lot of new laws this last year that have been passed and implemented that are going to be creating some one-time cost for the city. So, we were thinking about 4.5 for just general city operations. And then lastly, we would keep about a little over 5 million or unallocated. Again, we felt this was important not to earmark all the funds immediately, as we were still unsure about how the overall community and econo, economy would be impacted. We have seen so many changes over the last 18 months, and even though we saw and we really planned for a future landscape of recovery, we all too quickly realized these plans change. There may be areas staff has not considered, and we thought it especially important to make sure we had some dollars set aside to give council some flexibility to direct some of these funds. And plus, honestly, there may just be some other areas and needs we're just not fully aware of today. So, next steps. Staff is looking for feedback and approval from council on our proposed allocation of funds. These are truly our recommendation, recommended action plan based on discussion with our internal team and the mayor, but we would like to hear more from capital as well. We're asking for, we're asking to approve immediately tonight, though, spending in the following areas: the Washington Flex Fund of 1 million, business grants of 600,000, housing homelessness prevention and human services of 1.5, and hardware, software to support remote work of 500,000. And then once council has approved these targeted, proposed targeted allocations, then various subcommittees will be organized to work through some of the plans for each allocation. Our expectation is that the departments who are most responsible for this allocation area will meet, bring in other team members if needed, and discuss more of the details on how funds will be deployed. As of right now, we have just tried to allocate funds within different focus areas as identified today. These subcommittees or departments may then also present a more detailed plan for council to approve. Finance, the finance department will also submit quarterly reports to council, just to give you guys an update in regard to proposals received, where we're at with approved funding, and where we're at with the overall ARPA budget status. So, with that said, I just wanted to see if any of you had any questions or concerns. I have brought with me tonight Kristin Chavellis, who is our Fiscal Services Director, who has really taken that deep dive into the overall federal requirements, as well as Chip Binsett, Priti Shodar, and I believe me. So I'm gonna stop sharing my screen, so we can see each other.
All right. Well, Carrie, thank you very much. Great presentation, a great set of recommendations. So, thank you, Carrie, and thanks to all that have, have worked this hard to get us to this point, to bring forward these recommendations for council. And as we get started with questions, I, I just wanted to make sure I understood some, something very basic to the outline of this discussion. And that's that, I understand that, if, if, if I understood what you said, we, we, we're looking at a approximately $18.1 million total allocation from, from the federal government to help us through the next, through this year and the next couple of years. And that compares to, we, we, we lost 17 million just in, in 2020. So, so basically, and we, we know 2021 is down, and 2022 probably will be too. I mean, obviously, we'll do our best to bring revenues back, but, but so, the, the allocation, I guess, just to set the stage, is, is still less than, than what we were down in, in revenues. Of course, we, we spent a lot of time in 2020 working on tightening our belts and, and finding ways to save money and, and everything. So, that's where there's opportunity to maybe implement some, some sort of pandemic-related new assistance, like helping people with utilities and things like that. But I just wanted to make sure I understood that. So, we're not, we're not able to, obviously, we're not able to just give well and cover everything that we've lost. At the same time, we recognize we have a whole lot of new needs that we need to address. And do I, do I have that correct?
Somewhat. So the 17.1 is our revenue loss calculation that the federal government allows us to calculate, that we can use for general governmental services. And so, the city did experience revenue loss, but not 17.1 million dollars. But when we use the, the calculation that Treasury has outlined for us to say how much could be used for general governmental services, we would be, or we could use 17.1 of the 18.1 just for governmental services. Now, our outline does not ask for all of it to be used for general governmental services. You know, we're looking to use for some, for small business grants, for the Washington Flex Fund, for human services, and some other areas. And so, that's just a calculation they ask us to use to be able to kind of get a gauge on how much could we use for general governmental services revenue loss if we so chose.
Okay, very, very good. Thank you very much for that. Okay, with that, I'd like to go to council, and I don't think I have quite as nifty of a screen to show me which hands are raised, so I might just ask you, council, to just speak up if you... Oh, I, I do see that Angelina Benedetti has her hand raised, so we'll start with Angelina.
Thank you, Council President. Carrie, can I ask, can you give me an estimate, and because it's not, it's not at the tip of my fingers right now. How much did we get in CARES the first round?
It was 4.7, 4.7 million, I believe.
Okay, so 4.7 in CARES and now 18.1 in ARPA.
Yes.
Got it.
Okay. I see Councilmember O'Halloran has her hand raised. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is just a kind of an observation, as you were going through the first slide that shows the proposed funding opportunities with the rainbow-colored graph arrows. I, I kind of, initially, I kind of balked a little bit at the healthcare, health precautions, COVID response, 19.3, because it, just the way that it's described here, to me feels very different from the way you described it in more detail in the ensuing slide. I'm a lot more comfortable with enhancing our customer experience in the lobby of City Hall than I am with minimizing touchpoints and increasing social distance, because I think we already do that. And so to me, it seems like, why are we spending that much money to do something that we're, we're supposedly already supposed to be doing? So, I, I like the ensuing explanation that said, well, as a matter of fact, what we're gonna do is we're gonna completely gut the downstairs of the lobby, and we're gonna change the experience, and we're gonna blah, 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 blah. To me, that makes it 19.3, you know, 3.5 million dollars, much easier to swallow in that category than social distancing and, and, you know, minimizing touchpoints. I, I don't know if I'm the only one who felt that way, but thank you for, for clarifying, you know, how it was going to be used.
Great, great point, Councilmember, thank you. All right, Councilmember Van.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Carrie, for your presentation. I had a slight thought similar to Councilmember O'Halloran, but just with that in mind, I have several questions as well. I think, you know, with everything that was presented, it's great, first draft, and, but for clarification for tonight's committee reports, it's just immediate action that you're asking for, correct? Which is the Washington Flex Pen Funding, Flex Funding, the small business grant, the human services, and the hardware software, right? Not necessarily the overall, what you just presented, just for clarification.
Correct. We're immediate, you're asking for immediate spending for those four areas, and then just feedback, you know, maybe we, there's some other areas that you would like us to look into, maybe there's some areas we missed when we did our initial stab at this.
Yeah, and so, yeah, thank you for that clarification. And then as far as the, you were, there was a slide on regarding governmental spending, spending, which is the 4 million, 4.5 roughly. There was a bullet point regarding software replacement, and there was also another bullet point on a different section that was 500,000 for IT software. I'm just trying to be, what is the difference in that? Is it, you know, just a duplication, or, just for a little bit clarity?
Sure. So, right now, with everybody working remotely to make sure that we stay safe as a staff, we wanted to have some more equipment and software that just to kind of meet the needs of the staff right now. Some of them are kind of working on some small screens, or just don't have the tools they need to be able to do their work efficiently remotely all the time. The other one with general overall city operations is that we have our, we have some software that we've been needing to replace for some time, and we've kind of been kicking it down the road. It's our, our Eden Software, which is our accounting system, and it has, it's 22 years old, and it has some issues with not being able to do some things that we need to do when we're working remotely. So we have to have staff come in to do a lot of things in person, because it's old and antiquated. We've been looking to replace it for the last several years, but even just with the revenue loss in the last, you know, specifically last year, certainly wasn't a time to be bringing it up to look at it. So, with this opportunity to be able to use some of these funds for city operations, we thought it might be an, an area that we could look at to use some of these funds to just really help enhance our deliverables to our businesses, our vendors that we work with, and our community. It certainly could be used for lots of different things. We have lots of things that we postponed last year with just general building infrastructure that needs to be updated, and so these are just some ideas that we came forward, but certainly could have other ones as well.
Yeah, I appreciate the clarification. I do have a few more questions, if it's okay, unless there's someone else with a hand raised.
Certainly, go ahead. I don't see any other hands raised right now, so please go ahead, Council.
Yeah, with the, the overall ARPA funds, and, you know, I, I am very concerned that we only have 1.5 million allocated for the housing human service, so actually equity in housing human services, unless we're just going to talk about equity in a different section? But nowhere in there am I seeing equity, because as we're talking about COVID-19 pandemic, and while it has given us perfect vision, there's still, lots of us haven't seen that, right? So I think that we need to look into equitable recovery. So my concern is, with the 1.5 million, is that including staffing, or is it just the rental assistance and... rental assistance and all that? We can.
Right, and this does not include staffing. So this would be an influx of 1.5 going to our community, our residents that just really need that support. So whether it's food assistance, utility assistance, housing assistance, whatever that may be, to just provide some support and relief right now for those residents. You know, with the, the unemployment extra that people were getting, ending, we're, we're going to see a lot more need coming forward from our residents, and so we wanted to have, you know, a large amount dedicated to just helping our residents.
So with that, then, if I may ask, what about the equity component? What are we doing in terms of that? And how can we support the department that we just established as a city centering around equity, right? Also supporting our landmark business plan?
I see Preeti has her hand raised, so I will let her field that question.
Thank you. Councilmember, if I may answer that question, we, fortunately, we've kept a lot of the money aside and haven't dedicated all of the expenditure. And one of the things that we have identified, even in the 1.5 million, is to look at evaluating the expenditure through an equity lens. So one of the things we're doing in the newly formed department is to really review expenditure and priorities with an equity lens for, for really everything that we're looking at. And as we were putting forward our proposal for ARPA, our, our team got together, and this was like almost, you know, the first week of being officially formed, and did a research on what cities across were doing in terms of looking at ARPA funding, and provided at that time for the, to the mayor, a list of different areas of priority that we can look at with ARPA funds. And the fact that we've kept a significant amount to look at as we go forward, you know, we're seeing how we can possibly approach with an equity lens with some of the greatest needs that are out there in the community. And even today, there was an article in the Seattle Times about, you know, the significant impact of renters, you know, when the moratorium ends statewide. So we're hoping that, you know, starting with the money that, you know, if, if you so choose to approve today and going forward with the unallocated funds, we really give the thought to funding human services, because as you so rightly put, the, the needs are only exponentially growing. And, you know, if we prioritize with equity as a driver, we can really make a big difference in our community.
Thank you, Preeti, and thank you, Carrie. Yeah, it's kind of, for me, you know, looking at this and looking at how we have governed our city for the last eight, nine years with not, you know, an increase in human services funding, this is our opportunity to really look at equity and how we go about, because we're not, like you said, we won't be able to get another American Rescue Plan, or maybe there'll be other opportunities. But I think at this point in time, where there's so much human suffering and folks are out of their homes and one paycheck away, and just how do we go translating equity through all the different departments? I understand we need to help with City Hall, the infrastructure and the software, but certainly, when I see a budget like this, it's not giving priority to the human needs in our community. I have other questions, but I know that other councilmembers have their hands raised.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Van. Great questions. I, I did see Councilmember McGurven had his hand raised. Did you still wish to ask a question, Councilmember?
Sure, thank you, Mr. President. So, yeah, I think my question was along a similar vein. I know, obviously, we've spoken at length before about prioritizing human services funding, and when we had resources able to do that, I, I think that makes a lot of sense, and I can certainly see where the unallocated portion could go towards that. I guess my question would be, and maybe this would be at council direction, would that fall into our normal human services process that would start with a new budget year, potentially? More importantly, I suppose, would the Human Services Advisory Committee know that the pot would potentially, I mean, I guess if council were to direct that, that they're working with an expanded amount, so they know how far the line goes down? Because I know we've said that before, we wanted to make that a priority, but I also want to trust in the process to make sure that we're putting it where we need it. And I would also, I would assume, would follow up on the community needs assessment that we would, that we're, and I believe in the process of updating as far as how we would direct that spending. So I'm, I'm hoping that's, that this is the logic behind it, that they carry over. And if that's the case, like, I'm, I'm certainly all for that, to make sure we, through an equity lens, put it where it needs to go.
Thank you. Councilmember Benedetti?
Thank you very much, Council President. I want to echo Councilmember Van's concerns, or I, they were, they were expressed as questions. I will express them to my, to my taste as concerns. I really, I'm looking at the, at the percentages here, and I'm, I'm really deeply uncomfortable. We're looking at 44% total for structural improvements around the city, from what I can tell, between the health precautions and the city operations piece. That's 44%, with only 28.6% being unallocated for future. But it feels to me that it would be a better thing to maybe flip those numbers and to specify, when it comes to that unallocated piece, that you do intend to have a process that really emphasizes the, the need to determine what are the, what are the priority needs of the communities, and looking at it specifically from that equity lens. We know that, we know that this was a virus, is a virus, that is disproportionately impacting our black and brown residents, and I, I really feel the need here to, to respond proportionally with this, this opportunity, these monies that are designed to try and help people through it. And understanding that we do have unmet needs in the city, that's in terms of our own structure, I get that. It just, it feels to me that if these are, if these are funds that are designed to work through us and not just for us, that it, it feels that we need to, to be that through point to our residents. I also would stress, I, I, I think that, I, I'm absolutely comfortable with voting for the monies tonight. No question, that's a great start. No, not, no, I have no problem there. I'm talking about the, the other proportions here. I, I really, I, I think a million for broadband is way too little when we're talking about some, I mean, it was, it was really laid bare for us in this, in this pandemic, that access to, access to internet, access to, to high speed is something that really helps our students. And in terms of keeping people from having to gather, it helps people be safe, you know, being able to do things like telemedicine appointments. And I know our community court is looking at remote options, and, you know, there are lots of things where, where an investment in broadband is really going to help us with that, that safety piece, and it's also going to help our communities to thrive. So there's my piece, and I will leave the floor.
Thank you, Councilmember Benedetti. And I see Councilmember Van, like, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Council President. I have two more questions. One is in regarding to the 250,000 for small business grants. I know we're not really voting for that tonight, but that's businesses outside of the Renton Core, Downtown Core, correct?
Actually, $250,000 just to promote some activities within Renton, to pull and bring people to, into Renton to visit and to visit our business establishments. So whether it's, I know that earlier on, they'd had a wine walk, or some activities that can just influx our city with some activity to be able to bring people into the city.
Yeah, and, and thanks for the clarification. And while I understand that Downtown Core has had a lot of, you know, disadvantages because of the construction and the pandemic, I would love, I'd love it for staff to kind of look at the broader business, community outside of the Core, and particularly those who are around the Red Line Hotel, who've been very much impacted as well. And I don't know, there's like nothing in that regard, and that's very much COVID-related. And, and whereas the Downtown Core was really, in some ways, our fault as a government with the construction and with the contracts, right? Then, of course, with the pandemic. So I want to make sure that we focus on those who have not had the, the opportunities, impacted industry, and those who are outside as well. I have another question, unless someone else.
No, go ahead, and then I'd like to start wrapping it up, but please go ahead, Councilmember.
My last question is about the 600,000 regarding the SCORE facility. What is the, I guess, proportion in other cities sharing in, or are they contributing? It's just, I understand that everyone is stretched thin with finance, but at the same time, you know, when we have folks who are unhoused and folks who are not having food on the table, here we are investing in a jail facility. And so what are other partners' portion to investment?
So we're all contributing based on our member share, and so both Renton and Auburn have the largest share, member city share for SCORE. Really, because of the pandemic, they were not able to, they were able, they were having to reduce the number of people that they could bring into SCORE, and so they wanted to make sure that we were able to keep the staff that we had there to be able to support as we opened back up. The other thing was, is they really did a lot of cuts already at SCORE. They had some hiring freezes, they had some freezes in the amount that the staff are taking, some took decreases in what they were receiving for salaries, and so we wanted to make sure that we continued to support that program move through the pandemic.
Okay. I, I think at this point, I'd like to see if we can maybe follow up on Councilmember Benedetti's sort of suggestion, really, which is to, to talk about the, the, the first part, the, I think it's three, is it 3.6 million that's being asked for, for approval right away? There's some, some pretty urgent programs in there. And in fact, you know, I, I, it sounds like everybody's pretty supportive. I think there's good comments about the balance of the money, and, and I think part of the reason that this whole thing was presented tonight as an outline was just to get that kind of feedback. And so I do want to encourage councilmembers to continue the dialogue with staff about your thoughts about that. The, the, the three point, I'm hoping I'm quoting that number already. 3.6 million, yeah. The 3.6 million, I think, so it's, it's going to, to, to start making a dent. We know we're going to have a lot of issues with homelessness right away. We know people are, are falling behind in their utility payments and their rent. And also the, the business grants, and one thing, of course, about the business grants is anything we can do to help our small businesses will help our revenue stream also, which is important. So we want to, we want to grow that back as fast as we can, because that's where we get money to do our other services. So having said that, I'd like to ask one, one question, which is how fast, you know, can we get, if we approve this tonight, how fast can we actually start taking applications for these business loans? Is that, can we get that done in a matter of weeks or days, or?
Well, for the business loans, it's actually run through the Department of Commerce, so they're going to be handling all of that. So we really just contribute the money and be able to support the program, and then they run with it. So I think they're ready to hit the ground running. I know that we have a lot of partner, or local agents, or local other cities that are also working with this, and so I think they're all set up. They were just waiting to see how much we wanted to contribute.
Good. And the, the grants and rent assistance, will we be able to make that happen pretty fast?
The grants, the wonderful thing is, we had a whole grant program with the CARES funding, and we have Jessie Kottarsky, she did an excellent job on deploying that last time, and so we already have a really great framework established for that. So I think, yes, we'd be able to get that deployed fairly quickly as well. And then Preeti and her team has already started working on a framework of how they're going to use that 1.5 million, and have already actually been in communication with quite a few agencies already.
Great. And I, I think it'll be, I think as councilmembers, we'll be very interested in hearing how it's going, how are the allocations going? Maybe you'll find areas that have much greater, deeper need than you expected, and that might influence how we use the rest of the money.
Sure.
So I, I think I have a consensus here tonight that the 3.6 million is, is, is okay. See a thumbs up, so.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you very much. And any final comments or questions by council at this point?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilmember O'Halloran?
I just want to say, once again, very, very impressed with the level of detail and thoroughness that staff brings to these recommendations. It's, it's truly impressive, the degree to which you guys go to make sure that we really understand what the opportunities are and, and to bring it to us timely. And I just really want to say again, thank you, impressive.
All right, very, very well said. I thank you, Councilmember O'Halloran. And I think with that, I'll go ahead and adjourn the committee of the whole meeting. We will reconvene as a city council in 14 minutes at 7:00 PM. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bye-bye.